So committee hold to order, roll call please.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. Good morning, everyone. First item of business this morning is a discussion on the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and we'll call on Elizabeth Waifel from the Coalition. Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, and I apologize that I'm not standing for you. I'm still recovering from foot surgery, but it's great to see you all. I think most of you know this, but the Coalition is an organization of more than 100 cities located throughout the state. Fergus Falls is one of our longest time members. We work on issues that affect greater Minnesota. Local government aid and property taxes is our biggest one, but we also work on environment and energy, economic development, transportation, annexation and land use, as well as labor and employment issues. We had a lot of priorities this year. Top of that list, not surprisingly, was local government aid. We wanted to do a couple things: increase the amount going into it, update the formula, and index it to inflation. Wanted to see a bonding bill with a number of priorities, both for statewide programs, as well as for projects for a number of our cities. Also worked on lead line inventory replacement, permanent city street funding, corridors of commerce, and a number of items related to childcare and housing. This kind of tells you what this session looked like. It really was a crazy session, and I'm going to be honest about that. We had a lot of priorities, but we were also facing a lot of priorities that the DFL had, as well as priorities from a lot of other interest groups. At the end of the day, we did have a lot of good outcomes on our issues, but a lot of it was struggles and didn't get everything we wanted. And one thing I will note on that priority sheet, there was a lot we worked on, and there was a lot we were able to accomplish. I'm just going to hit two or three of the areas. There's a lot more. I would check the outcome sheet that's in your packet, as well as read the narrative. But as you know, we had a budget surplus. One thing I want to point out that's important to remember on the slide is that it was a $17 billion surplus, but only a portion of it, about a third of it, was ongoing money. And that makes a difference, because when you're asking for money for programs going forward, you need to have an ongoing surplus. So that did impact what we were able to achieve during the session. The DFL trifecta, the surplus was great, but the DFL trifecta posed some challenges for us. Honestly, the volume and speed of legislation was nothing like it ever seen, and I've been lobbying for 15 years. The DFL majorities were dominated by metro area members. We just have fewer and fewer Democrats from Greater Minnesota in the legislature. And as a result, there wasn't that many backstops on some of the harmful proposals that were pushed forward. Local government aid, obviously, again, one of the reasons we exist and one of the biggest things we work on. Couple of things we wanted, like I said, we wanted to increase the ongoing appropriation by at least $150 million. And then also update the LGA formula, and that is really one thing that the CGMC really focuses on working on. We have a full-time financial analyst who helps us work on that, and they try to update the formula about once a decade. And so, one of the things that's extremely important to us, and what we do, is we make sure as that formula is being rewritten, that Greater Minnesota has a voice, and that the formula works for all of our members, because that formula does make a difference in terms of how you're going. So we wanted to get that. We came up with a formula we thought really served our cities, and we also wanted to add inflation and population growth to the LGA program. The problem we ran into, like I said, only so much of the budget target was ongoing, and there was only $3 million allocated to tax relief. So we were competing, LGA was competing with other things like child independent tax credits, the push for Walts checks, public safety aid, and housing aid. Governor's LGA proposal, I don't know if any of you remember this from around the time of our Legislative Action Day, but he proposed $30 million and the formula update. The challenge is that $30 million is really not even keeping up with inflation. So we responded, got some attention. Our statement decrying the proposal is inadequate. The governor did increase his proposal up to $40 million, which we thanked him for, but asked him to keep up in that number. We had mayors from across the state testifying on the need. Virginia Mayor Larry Cuff worked with our House author and testifying there, and then we had Mayor Rick Schultz testifying in the Senate. You can see here what the different proposals were across the board. Obviously, the CGMC probably had the biggest proposal, wanted to push it to $150 million. The governor and Senate really came in kind of low. House was much more receptive, and they included the inflation factor, which we think is extremely important and needs to get done. The end of the day, the final outcome was close to what the House said, $80 million. That gets incorporated into the LGA appropriation going forward, so that's added going forward. Unfortunately, we did not get that inflation adjustment there. Again, that has to do with the actual ongoing surplus not being as that large, but we will continue to push on that. But we are still very happy with the $80 million. It's making a difference in a lot of bottom lines for our communities. As you can see, for Fergus Falls, your LGA went up by about, you know, close to $600,000 as a result of that increase. And again, we couldn't have gotten that done without our cities and all of the work that we did together. You see, again, what the governor and the Senate came up with, and so it was really important that we all together made that push to get that increase for LGA. Bonding. Bonding's been a challenge. It shouldn't be that much of a challenge, but we didn't have a bonding bill in '21 or '22, and as you know, the bonding bills require a supermajority, and that makes it challenging. The House this year passed a bonding bill early in session with 21 GOP votes, in addition to all of Democrats, but that was not that easy in the Senate. It failed initially, and then they doubled down. Their strategy was basically to make demands for some other things, including meaningful tax relief and aid for nursing homes. Negotiations continued throughout the session, but then it got a little dicey at the end, because the Democrats, you know, there was a big enough surplus that they could pass an all cash bill and told the Republicans they'd do that if they did not agree to a bonding bill. That would not have been good for us. And this kind of shows you what would have happened on at least the larger priorities on a bonding bill with a cash bill. Things like the PFA would have been extremely underfunded, housing and childcare not funded at all. So a cash bill really would have been a bad deal for Greater Minnesota. So we got very engaged. Again, I've been lobbying for 15 years. I have never seen a reaction to a letter that we have sent like the reaction to this letter. And it was sent in the closing days of session, basically telling the Senate GOP, it's like, now is the time for you to step up. This is a statewide issue. It's for your constituents. And it wasn't the only thing that made the difference, but it had an impact. It made all of the media, I had lobbyists I didn't know coming up to me at the Capitol and thanking me for the CGMC doing this. It really had a significant impact. Sometimes putting the right amount of pressure makes a deal. But finally, why did a bonding bill finally come together? Again, that public pressure from organizations like us and one of the other trade unions put together a similar letter had an impact. Lot of pressure from local officials like you and constituents. Again, that's how we get that done. It had been three years, so that sort of time lag also had an impact. And that threat of a credible alternative, the cash bill, sort of sealed it. So at the end of the day, there were worse legislators willing to compromise, and we got a bonding bill done. Environment. Sorry, I just went, yep, going the right way. This is what I work on, and one thing that, you know, three years ago wasn't even something we were thinking about. Over the last two years, we put a significant amount of effort into the lead pipe program. As you probably know, there's really not a safe level of lead in water for kids. And all cities are required by the EPA to map their lead pipes by October 2024. So we sought a significant amount of funding to do two things. One is to help cities create that inventory. A lot of cities that are older don't have those records. They're not sure what's happening on the homeowner's side. And this $240 million will pay for both grants for the inventory, but more importantly, to actually help replace those lead pipes on both sides. Because in some cities, you know, they're forward-thinking, and they've replaced the city-side lead lines over the years, but not on the homeowner's side. And what this program will allow is replacement on both sides. And the $240 million is very important. It's matching about $100 million coming in from the Fed. We will continue to push for this, because it is really important that our cities in Greater Minnesota have access to that funding. So that's an important program, new priority for us, but something, honestly, it was a very big win for us this year. You can see Bradley there with the authors and everything at the bill signing. Those are actual lead pipes. So a lot of money was invested in water programs, and you can kind of see there's more details on there. Largest amount we've seen going into all of the PFA programs, a lot of money in for Greater Minnesota individual programs as well. We did want to put ongoing money into the PFA, but as I mentioned, there was very little money available for ongoing projects and very little available sort of in the environment area, which is where that would have had to have gone. And that's me. In addition to getting money for lead pipes, I spent a lot of time working on playing defense against proposals that would have really harmed Greater Minnesota. Again, like I said, it's a very metro-dominated majority, and so a lot of issues we had to work on, starting with the PFA programs. There was a big push to rewrite the way the PFA programs work. PFA is Public Facility Authority. They pay for your drinking water, your wastewater. And there were numerous attempts to try and rewrite them in a way that would basically funnel all the money to the metro area. In fact, at one point, the bonding chair actually snuck this provision into the jobs bill. It was unveiled on a Wednesday, and we had to work furiously, and it finally culminated in calls from the governor's staff to leadership staff in the House late on a Thursday, and they pulled it out on a Friday. But they were trying to push forward with this, and that was just one of the times we had to stop. There were other proposals on the policy side that we also had to spend a lot of time working on. There were some permitting changes that when they originally rolled out would have made it really hard to permit water, new water, new air for businesses and for local governments. And we were able to narrow the reach of those significantly, so that they were not applying to Greater Minnesota. Spent a lot of time on that, and it was a big deal this session. The challenge we ran into is there was just no, or very little consideration, how these proposals that were really aimed at problems in the metro, how they would impact Greater Minnesota. And so something we spent a lot of time, you can see me right there, a lot of time doing that this session. And looking ahead, we expect this is going to be something we're going to be wrestling with for at least the next couple of years. Looking ahead. Like I said, there's a whole bunch of other things we worked on. Look in the pamphlet. This year is what is supposed to be the bonding year. It's an even year, 2024, should have bonding. We expect there could be some discussion of constitutional amendments. There's already one going to be on next fall regarding the lottery. Right now, it's a little early to say, but all indications are that there could be more surplus spending, so that sends a scramble for money. There will be, as you may know, there are fix-it items. When you pass that much legislation, you get to the end, and you're like, oh, that doesn't work quite like I thought. So we'll be seeing that. And then just a lot of policy. Fund starts in February 2024, and there's also an election next year, which sometimes has an impact on how people behave. At the legislature, the only folks who will be up in 2024 are the House, so it'll impact the House a little differently than the Senate. Upcoming events, just a little ways away, our fall conference is in Wilmer. Got a lot of great folks lined up for that. Most popular event of the year is always that Legislative Action Day on March 20th. Encourage you to come to any of those events. And then obviously, our summer conference will be next summer, and that is in Wake Park in St. Joseph. We're going to be going to the Quarry Amphitheater. The mayor and city members over in both cities are really excited to have us, so we hope that you put that on your calendar. Does anybody have any questions? I know that's a lot of information, and there's a lot more that happened this session.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Anyone have any questions for Elizabeth?
I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
Do you see, are they pushing for more funding for the MPCA? You talked about environment being kind of a topic.
So there was, I mean, there was some more funding, yes. And the way the MPCA's budget is done is the, you know, it's done within buckets in terms of how they organize. So there was a push for more funding for the MPCA, and I'll just use the water area as an example. If you've been following along, the MPCA has been trying to push an increase in permit fees over the last couple of years, because water fees has been underfunded. So they tried to push for a permanent increase to the water quality area. They got a one-time increase to the water quality area, but they did not get the permanent amount in there. They did put some money into the MPCA to sort of pay for. There was, the legislature put on the MPCA a significant amount of rulemaking. If you look at the rulemaking docket right now, I think they've got like 10 at least different rulemakings that they're doing, and so there was money put into that, so they can do those specific tasks assigned to them. So there has been a push, but it's been assigned to specific buckets. I don't know if there was a specific bucket you were thinking of.
Yeah, and it's just that the fees seem to have gone up quite a lot, and the penalties equally have gone up.
The fees have gone up, not as much as they could. Like you said, they haven't been able to raise the water fees, because they actually have to do that via rulemaking, and it's something we've been pushing back on for a number of years. But it is that balance that they will have to raise some of those fees. But they've been able to hold the line on water quality fees, but some of the other fees may have gone up, and they are. The agency is certainly trying to play catch-up on that. Sometimes, I'm going to be honest, sometimes the legislature sees shiny new objects, and that's where the funding goes into, rather than the permanent funding, like you're suggesting, where it should go. We were supportive. I know it sounds unusual, who would think that the CGMC would be pushing for money for the MPCA, but we did push for the permanent funding on the water side, so that it wouldn't be hitting our wastewater fees.
Okay, thanks.
Elizabeth, real quick, if you could briefly, on the MPCA and the wastewater, just tell us about the Osakis. I think that's such an important example of what the Coalition does for Greater Minnesota cities that wouldn't happen if it weren't for the Coalition, quite honestly.
Yes, and yeah, so what we did for Osakis, and we're going to be, you mentioned briefly without saying the city name, something else we're working on. But the city of Osakis engaged in what ended up being a 10-year battle on their wastewater permit. The MPCA came in, and Osakis discharges into sort of a water body that goes into a lake, and there's a lot of filtration. And basically, the MPCA tried to put on them a permit that was honestly not justified, we don't think justified by what the science said and by what is actually in state law. And so we worked with the city, and the CGMC contributed through the Environmental Action Fund to their litigation to challenge the agency in a case that ended up going all the way to the Minnesota Supreme Court, and we won, which doesn't often happen. But it basically, honestly, the opinion was quite spicy, for lack of a better word, just pointing out how some of the law had been ignored and whatnot, and that they wouldn't have been able to do this. And so, honestly, it's a little frustrating, I think, for Osakis, because after all of this litigation time, they're basically back at the solution that was proposed originally. But they were able to avoid having to build a brand-new wastewater facility, but it also created really good, strong precedent, so that these are important considerations when the agency is doing other wastewater permits. And so it was something, again, where we were able to band together and do that. We've got another thing that will be, I don't want to get into too many details, because it comes before the board in September, but another city we're likely helping where we are seeing some overreach, and we're in a way that we think will impact all of our cities if we're not dealing with it now. So it's something where we also work, not just on the legislative side from an environmental standpoint, but also on the regulatory and agency side, because that makes a difference. I mean, when I get home tomorrow, I'm going to be finishing up our comments on the wild rice sulfate rule, because that will have an impact on our folks. And we are very engaged in a lot of different activities at the agency itself because of this rulemaking that's going on, all these rulemakings and other things that are going on that really have an impact. But the Osakis was a huge, huge win for us, and quite frankly, Osakis would not have been able to do that without the rest of the Coalition. But it also, again, like I said, benefits not just them, but it was precedent-sitting litigation, sort of help other cities as you go through that permitting process.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Any other questions for Elizabeth? Well, thank you very much for being here this morning.
Great, well, thank you. Always a pleasure to visit Fergus Falls, so thanks.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, next item, we're, item two is being delayed until further meeting. Item number three is a communication plan. We'll call on Jean Bowman. Good morning, Jean.
Good morning. Let me regroup here. Is she in?
Nope.
It's not. There we go. All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, I'm here to introduce a communication plan for the community. As you know, this position that I hold is new. Last year, and for 150 years, the city didn't have a dedicated person or centralized location for letting the public know what's going on in Fergus Falls, how you make decisions, how they can engage with the city staff and council members. So that's what this role is designed to do. It really serves as a guiding framework. I'm not going to walk through all the pieces, because you guys have a great detailed plan, I think. But really, this is as much about public information and education and outreach. A lot of you know my background with Visit Fergus Falls, and that's very different. That's very, you know, paint a great picture of the city, and of course, we've got a great city to promote to residents, but really, it's about education and information. They want to know all the details. And I really think about that as news. So news is comprised of facts. People want to know the who, what, where, when, how, and why about what the city is doing, decisions you're making that impact their finances is a big one. Roads, streets, pensions, all those good things. I did include in the plan our mission and vision, which was on the website. I don't know if any of you were part of creating that or when it was created, but we should revisit that at some point, but that's not high on our list. But I just put it there so that you had a refresher about what the council's trying to achieve. So in the plan, the objectives really focus on the what. What are we trying to achieve? And that is really an informed public, an educated public. I know in there I have, you know, we want our citizens to be so informed and so supportive of what we're doing that they become ambassadors for us, just like staff and council are ambassadors. You know, you're the first line of defense, and we want to be sure that you know what's going on, so that you can carry that message forward. It's kind of like that old telephone game with the cans and the wires. You know, the more removed we get from the source, the crazier stories get sometimes. So we want to be that resource. The strategies represent the how. How are we going to get the word out? So I see myself kind of as an internal agent for staff, department heads, for council, for boards and commissions. And the communications messaging works both ways. Everybody's great about saying, hey, Jean, we are going to be doing this project. Can you help me get the word out? Park and rec registration starts this date. Roads are going to be closed, or whatever that messaging might be. But I also seek at regular intervals, especially a department head meeting, some story ideas, sort of that, you know, those lifestyle pieces, what are the good stories, the unsung heroes within our department. So that works two ways. Our primary audience certainly is our residents. We do have others who, in Fergus Falls, who need to know what's going on, whether they're visitors or maybe commuters, so they're a secondary audience. So the distribution recognizes the where. Where are we going to get the word out? So the key is consistency and repetition. We layer the same message in many different places, so that people have the highest likelihood of hearing what our messaging is. You know, everybody's got a different appetite, whether it's for the internet, or reading the newspapers, or following us on Facebook. There are really two big categories. There's the owned media, and those listed in the plan are all the communication channels that we're responsible for. We can put things on our website, on our utility flyer, et cetera. So we control those platforms, so to speak. The earned media are really our news outlets, social media, the platforms we don't have control of. And we just don't put all our eggs in those baskets, because if I pitch a news story to the Daily Journal, they may or may not have time for it. There could be a hurricane. Well, not here, but you know, something more timely could take over, and then they need to bump our story, or they don't get to it at all. The tactics there, you've got a page at least of the specific action items, and a lot of these things are already happening. This is the day-to-day what I do with our staff and with our community partners. And I'll point out one thing, Councilmember Kwame and I talked yesterday, in the annual, it says a logo refresh. We won't do that every year. We'll do that once. Ideally, we would have done that last year in partnership with our sesquicentennial, but it's been at least 30 years since that logo was developed, and maybe you don't know, but it was actually developed by Judy Stringer, I believe, for Visit Fergus Falls, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau at the time. So I think we're due for a little refresh on that. And lastly is measurement. I mean, feedback is a really important piece of the communication loop. So I'm always hopeful and receptive to specific feedback, so we can pivot if needed and change things up, but see how we're doing. And ideally, it'd be great to do a communication survey of our residents probably every five years. Sooner would be great to do the first one, so we've got that baseline from which to grow from, just to see where they consume news, what they want to hear about, if they feel informed, and those kinds of things. So that is an overview. Any questions, ideas, comments?
I got a couple.
Yeah.
I think under objectives, we should add some language that says to provide unbiased information with no affiliation to either or any political party. And then under strategies, we list Otter Tail County Lake Association, but we don't make any mention of Downtown City Council.
Oh, the Downtown Riverfront Council?
Yep.
Yes. I'll add that, and in fact, that was another one Mr. Kwame and I were talking about yesterday. Really, there could be a long list, so sort of that, et cetera. But Lakes Country Service Co-op, lots of potential partners. Good.
Then the same comment on the logo. I don't think we need to be refreshing that every year, because imagine the cost to do that. Every city park, every city sign, every city vehicle needs new artwork. And so I think at this point in time, spending money on a logo wouldn't go down very well.
Right. And we'll just really do that once, and then roll it out. You know, our digital and print things as they're needed, but much like the county when they did a logo refresh, you know, we don't put it on all our vehicles all at once or redo that, but we will have a water tower coming up in a few years, so, yeah.
And then I was curious about the partner with Otter Tail County to add a distinct 10-digit phone number for Fergus Falls Smart 911. What exactly is that?
Well, and one of the ways, you know, some people are just all about their phones, and so they want to receive information by text. So rather than reinventing the wheel and having a text platform just for Fergus Falls, we can piggyback with the county. They already have a contract with Smart 911, and we can be part of that. I mean, our police and fire departments already use the Smart 911 for emergencies, but there's sort of a secondary level that allows us to use it for informational messaging, and it's not so much promotional as it is, it's got to be informational, like snow removals, snow emergencies is really the big one.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
And then I agree, waiting five years, we need a baseline sooner than that.
Thank you.
That was it.
Okay.
Anthony, any other questions, comments? Virginia, Scott, go ahead.
When Jean and I visited, there were a few other edits that I suggested that I think that we could also take a look at. On page two, under objectives, the point reads, "To influence the narrative." All of the various objectives basically do that, and I think that it's essentially redundant to even include that sentence, so we could cut that one out. And then under strategies, we pointed out that the line reads, "Together with the fire and police departments, assist with public information as part of emergency preparedness." And the suggestion here would be to add the words "and" response. And even though Jean wouldn't be expected to be the primary responder to some emergency, say, for example, from a fire or police call, she would be naturally involved in the response, you know, beyond that initial news break, or for things having to do with other emergency activities that count around on the ongoing, you know, fill-in-the-information-blank part of it. So adding the words "and" response, I think would be appropriate there. Wasn't there one other place? I thought there was one other place.
Electronic messaging center, as far as owned media.
Oh, yeah.
You suggested I add that. We do have a portable message board that our Public Works Department uses when we have changes or in garbage day pickup due to holidays, or parking, or that kind of thing. But electronic messaging and technology will only grow as time goes on.
Yeah, we had actually spoke about that quite a lot, in that it might be something the city would want to put on their capital improvement plan down the line, to consider going to a message center, because already we're using it for things like you mentioned, garbage day pickup and things like that. And as fewer and fewer people pay attention to things like newspaper and radio, but they're out and about and see outdoor signage, I think that that's a very valid thing. And of course, coming from a sign guy, it's my business, so that's what I do. So that's what I do. Last item would be on page five, under the monthly items. Jeanne personally participates in the BPAC and the Human Rights Commissions, and so she included this as far as being involved in various commissions and committees and whatnot. And I think that's great. But I don't know that it, it kind of sounds like a job description. And I think that being involved in any number of committees or commissions or boards, whether it's those specific ones or any others that need the help of Communications Director to, you know, work through a message, get a message out, I think that that participation is welcome and important, but not limited to those two.
Thanks, Scott. Other comments or questions for Jean? We can move this to the council on Monday night for adoption, the motion this morning. Someone like to make that motion?
It'd be Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. Thank you, Anthony. Got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want this on the consent agenda, once I reflect those changes?
That'd be fine by me.
Yeah? Okay.
If anyone would like to remove it, we can do that. Okay, next, moving along. Well, Jean Bowman again on the proclamation, policy, and procedures.
Several times a year, the city gets requests from outside sources, and that is one thing I want to emphasize. This is external request for proclamations, and we've never had a policy for that. And so we've seen a couple instances where requests have come forward, and this policy is designed to sort of set what are those parameters? What things will we consider proclamation-worthy, so to speak? And then how will we get that application and then execute it going forward? Really, we want things to be fair. We want them to be significant, and we want them to be impactful to the city of Fergus Falls. So a couple of, Lynn and I did some research, mostly Lynn, on what some other communities are doing. And we sort of took the best and worst without being very long. In fact, it's a very short policy. Really, we want to be fair, and we don't want to be the jumping off point for commercial promotion. I mean, certainly, 150th anniversary is significant if you're a business, you know, whether it's Lundin's or the Daily Journal. But, you know, we've had a bank recently said, you know, we give a great lending rate for home renovation, and so we did a proclamation. And then we had calls the next day from other banks saying, well, we have a great lending rate. So, you know, we want to just really define what are those situations, and then certainly how to proceed with that request. So that's simply all this does. Really, the rest of it is procedural. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Jean on that? Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
I'd like to suggest an edit on this and then essentially make the motion to accept this as well.
Thanks.
I'd like to make an edit as well. I'll second it.
Go ahead, Scott.
Under the, oh, it's right in the middle of the page. The sentence currently reads, proclamation should request inclusiveness, not exclusiveness, and recognize the strength of our democracy is our diversity. It must not take sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious controversy or personal convictions. And while I think it's important to have this statement in there, I think it could be shortened up dramatically, and we could just take it right from proclamations must not take sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious controversy or political or personal convictions, and cut the phrase about inclusiveness and strength of democracy and all that. I think that's a little subjective, and I think it would be just as effective and clean as a statement without that language.
Thanks, Scott. Did you have a suggestion?
Under the charitable and nonprofit organizations help increase awareness of their programs and activities, I think we should also have it that it's verbiage, that it's not a solicitation for money. You know, that the giving day, we have, I think there's like four or five charity organizations come in and they do a pitch. Well, that, there's a lot of other charitable organizations on that day seeking funding. And I think we highlight five, and that gives the appearance that those are somewhat sponsored by the city as being, you know, charities of choice that you should give to. I mean, technically, what we're saying with this is that every charity on Giving Day could come into the council chambers and make a proclamation to say, gift to us.
I agree.
So I think, you know, if it's an organization, you know, like suicide prevention that's doing the downtown event on the, whatever, day, 23rd of September, I think that's kind of a different thing because it's an event for the community. But I think if it's coming in here and putting up a video and saying, give us money, I think that's not right.
Okay, good.
And then I still would question, I think, like, the 50 years, it's great, but like, the Daily Journal is not the same business owner that it was. If it was still owned by the Underwood family and it came in, I would support it. But when it's owned by an organization that does not reside in Fergus Falls, then I think it's gone through many, many changes. I think it's not a community business in that sense. But I can live with 50 years.
All right. We have some suggested changes. We have a motion in a second. Did you have another comment, Scott?
And this is just a comment, not necessarily an edit, but under the procedure, just to clarify it so that it was a clear understanding. The proclamation must be drafted by the person or organization making the request. The point of this statement is that, you know, the city or our staff, we don't write the proclamation. The person that's bringing it in has to be responsible for writing it, but we don't care who writes it, as long as it's not us. Does that make sense?
Certainly. I think Lynn often provides guidance so that it meets the criteria and the form and everything else. But I think the point is taken, that we're not going to spend a bunch of time on staff time writing a proclamation for someone else. So we have those changes noted. We have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, for both of those items. Item number five is, we'll call on City Administrator Andrew Bremseth to propose a council liaison to the airport. Good morning, Andrew.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor. Councilmembers, back this up just a little bit so I don't spit all over these guys at the table. But kind of a straightforward request this morning. The few members of the Friends of the Airport approached the mayor and I a couple weeks ago and asked if the council could appoint a liaison to their group. They've got a lot of activity going on out at the airport. There's been a lot of changes and renovations over the last few years, and they have some major initiatives in front of them. So they thought it would be helpful to have an elected official at the table. And O'Brien works very closely with management out there and the Friends of the Airport as well, but they thought having an elected official might be beneficial to their mission and what they're trying to accomplish out there as well. So in talking with the mayor, we suggest Councilmember Hicks. I did not ask him before I put this out there. I intended to, and in this season of budget, time gets away from us, so.
I will offer that motion.
There you go. He may say no, but it was in full transparency.
That's fine.
I'll second.
Laura, you agree with that, Anthony?
Yeah.
Thanks. All in favor of that motion, swell.
Let me just say, Your Honor, it'll be added to the list of our annual appointments at the beginning of the year, so you'll see one more, and then I won't have to come back and do this.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Anthony. Yeah, Scott.
At what time, I believe the board was called the Airport Advisory Board, and now this is the Friends of the Airport, so there's been some change, and maybe you could explain what that is.
Yeah, so the Airport Advisory Committee was a committee that was officially a committee of the city in city code. That has since been removed from city code. They thought some of the parameters around that weren't super beneficial for them, such as the limit to the number of members, open meetings, things like that. So they've chosen to go around similar to the library, where they have a Friends group that's maybe a little more informal, gives them more flexibility. You know, they don't have to necessarily come back to the council and get blessings anytime they want to do something, as long as they have the capital and the funds to be able to do that. And so it seemed to work. They've made a lot of movement over the last few years. And O'Brien's been a part of that, so it's not like the city's completely cut out of that process. But it seems to be going well. But it is different in the sense that it's not an official committee of the city and not appointed by the city council. The membership is not appointed by the city council.
They recruit their own members? They're not appointed by the, are they appointed by the mayor or no?
No, we have no involvement in appointing their membership.
Okay.
So this is a way to connect that group a little bit more. It's not the same as it was before, but at least have some connection to the council that they can bring it back.
Okay.
We used to have a liaison to the airport.
Yeah. And Councilmember Hicks, I believe, served in that capacity for many, many years, which is why he was kind of a logical choice. You know, if somebody else has an interest in that, let the mayor know for January when we reappoint. But it was kind of a logical, you know, mid-year jumping point kind of thing. I'm happy to hear that he's accepted the nomination today.
So we have a motion to bring this to the council on Tuesday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Item number six is a special parking permit request for 901 North Cleveland Avenue. This is brought forth by Ward Two Council members Tom Ruffer and Scott Kwame. And in Tom Ruffer's absence, I guess I'll call on Scott Kwame.
Thank you. Lady that lives at 901 North Cleveland runs a daycare. Cleveland is, in this part of Cleveland, is right across the street from Cleveland School, and it's a fairly high-traffic street. And as people come to pick up and drop off their little children at the daycare, if there's cars parked right in front of the lot, they end up having to do this basically in the traffic lane. And it's a pretty significant safety issue, and it gets worse in the wintertime. The request is just to basically reserve one parking space in front of her house, and that, along with the driveway space, would provide room for a car to, you know, step in or pull in, or even like the outer express bus to be able to pull in and safely pick up and drop off kids for the daycare. There's any number of ways that you can word it as far as parking signs, and my motion would be to have staff work with the options that are available and come up with a choice for a parking sign that would answer this and provide for a no parking space.
Thanks, Scott. There's a motion. Someone like to second that?
I'll second it, and then I got a question.
Thanks, Anthony.
I mean, I think it's a very positive thing, but how do we make sure that it doesn't get like grandfathered in that, you know, if the house changes ownership or that we don't have like multiple requests from, I think we have to have some criteria around it so that, you know, other residents in town don't come along and say, well, I mean, for example, on the street I live in, up the road, there's a couple of houses that are triplexes. And even though they have parking spaces behind, a lot of them park on the street, and they park in front of other people's houses. So, you know, if I lived in one of those houses, can I come to the city and say, I'm fed up of not being able to park outside, quote, "my house"? Can I get a special parking request? So I think it's a good thing, but I think we need some criteria around how we manage it going forward.
So we can ask staff to bring that criteria back when they bring back the possible solutions for the council to consider? Is that?
Well, I think it's reasonable to expect that. I don't know that we see a lot of these kind of requests, and frankly, if they come to us as they do and we, you know, choose to do them or not, that's fine with me.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Anthony. Any other comments on this? We have a motion to bring this to the council. Actually, this is, just go directly to staff. We don't have to bring this to council. We'll just bring this, give this to staff. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that motion carries.
Governor, we may ask the council to act on it, just simply because to the point that we just made, five years from now, if the ownership of the home changes and we say, no, we're going to remove that, it'd be nice to have the official record of the city indicating that action and the intent. And the intent is clear that it's for the daycare drop-off and pickup.
Sure.
In that only, right?
Yes. And whether we can write that into the conditional use permit or something like that.
We'll just write it into a resolution, and Lynn maintains all the resolutions that are approved, and we'd be able to find that.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Sounds good. Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
I know the county issues the license for that. Is the city informed of that? Because I mean, if we were informed of it, I mean, the minute the license was pulled, then I would say that the parking thing would be pulled because it would no longer be needed.
No, we're not. We're not informed of that, that I'm aware of. Is that, but the conditional, is there, there is a conditional use permit on that property, correct? In a neighborhood? No, it's not a conditional use. Okay. All right. Well, we'll have staff come back with some options and put it in resolution form so there's a way to track it. And it sounds like a very resolvable issue. If just staff will be able to do that, so we'll move that to the council. Moving, I'm sorry, yes, move that to staff through council. Moving along, let's see. Proposed highway extension from County Highway 1 to 210. Again, we've talked about this in the past, but we'll call on Scott Kwame.
Thanks again. A little over a year ago, Rich Wenzel came and spoke and asked the city to pursue or at least consider adding a connecting highway link or county road link between County Road 29 on the southeast side of town and County Highway 1 on the northeast side of town. We talked a little bit about that, looked at some maps, discussed the possibilities of what it would take to create a path through there. They would include a trail and include a bridge over the river and whatnot, and ultimately at that time, decided not to take any action. About a month ago or less, Rich came back and spoke again and brought this topic back up again with a little bit of new information. He's kind of been out there beating the bushes and talking to people to see what kind of reaction this would have, and specifically has been talking to folks that are in businesses that involve trucking, you might say, like construction-related businesses, and, you know, people like Mark Sanding Gravel and Berry Construction, Delzer Construction, excavating companies. These kinds of trucks now are running through town, and especially with the construction that we've got. If there was an option on the east side of town for that kind of traffic to avoid having to go through town, that would be a real advantage for those kinds of companies. There's other advantages to this beyond just the convenience of it. It would just be a real good way to get some of this heavy traffic out of our central part of the city, and it would provide for a good link on the east side of town. And so with that, he was asking specifically that the city create a joint powers committee with the county to study this and to possibly look at how it might come together. You know, what kind of options there might be for a route or funding or those kinds of things. At this point, not looking to invest a great deal of money, but more along the lines of just getting together with the county staff. He's talked with several at the county. They seem to be very much in favor of pursuing this and would like to see the city work together with the county to at least begin to investigate this to some level. So the motion would be to have the city work with county staff to begin to study this issue.
So that's a motion to bring this to the council. Would there be someone to second that motion?
I'll second it so we can have discussion, but I'm not in favor of it, so.
Go ahead, Anthony.
I think we have significant issues of our own roads, unless this could be totally funded by not the residents of Fergus Falls. You know, it just shouldn't happen. I mean, we, you drive on our streets and they're rough, so I think we shouldn't waste time and effort and any money doing this. If the county wants to pursue it, then let the county pursue it. But I think the city, we've got enough issues on our own roads, so I'm not in favor of it.
Thanks, Anthony. Other comments? Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
We've been working on the roads on the finance committee, and it's just been a real challenge to try and find funding. And of course, I'm in favor, I like this idea, but it's just not, there's no funding going to be there for the next probably 10 years or eight years anyway, the way it looks. We have so many, we have five projects, our $26 million we're looking at the next five to seven years, and it's just not, it's not on the cards, so I won't, I'm not in favor of it. I like the idea, but it's, I can't vote for it.
Thanks, Scott. Other comments before we call for the question?
Yeah. I would agree with Anthony and Scott also on that. And we are, just so I know for sure, we are talking about that. What we used to call it was basically a cow trail that went from the, on the west side of Glenmoreland Farm from Main Street to 210. Is that correct?
There was a proposed route through there.
Yeah. Okay. I think that was the road there.
Yeah.
And then.
Used some existing and a.
Right, it was, it, you can see where it's all grown over.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Scott?
It's actually, as far as the route specifically, cow trail or not, that was not defined, and that was kind of the point of this, was to have the city work with the county to look at possible routes, whether it went down the cow trail, or it went down some other route that would connect essentially from the intersection of Highway two-ten and twenty-nine on the southeast side to County Road one, probably in the neighborhood of Lakeway Express on the north end. But when you take a look at the west side of town where the Tower Road Bridge is, that took many, many years, and by just having it on the radar, not necessarily actively investing any time or money in it over many years, because it was on the radar, as opportunities for funding were identified, then they could be incorporated into the plan. So I think that having it as a long-term goal for the city and at least identifying the people that would be involved to work with the county is a good thing, and I would speak in favor of it.
Thanks, Scott. Other comments? There's a motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion fails. Moving along to item number eight, Public Improvement nine-three-five-three, the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Master Plan and Airport Layout. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Your Honor and council members. In May, the city council initiated Public Improvement nine-three-five-three. This is a Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Master Plan and ALP Airport Layout Plan Update. Since this was initiated, we've submitted for a fund, application for funding to this FAA and state for a final grant offer. Just recently, the FAA contacted me indicating that the federal offer is being currently processed, and will be sent via electronically to myself and our city attorney for endorsement. However, there's a short window that we have to act on this, so they advised me of this coming up, that should be available by the end of this month, and probably about two weeks, week and a half to accept it. So considering this, I'm just requesting authorization to the FAA's offer, given the short response window. Like with past projects, the federal offer will be sent to the state, the state will combine their offer, and the final grant offer will be presented to the city council for acceptance. Just for your memory, this project is funded ninety percent through federal bipartisan infrastructure law, and then there's a matching state offer of five percent, and a local funded through the four-fifty-six of five percent as well. So at this time, I'm just requesting authorization to accept the FAA grant offer for Public Improvement nine-three-five-three, and I'll just open up any questions you may have.
I'll offer that, Your Honor. Motion, second, Scott. Questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I don't believe there are any additional items that I'm aware of. Andrew, Clara?
Yeah, I have like one update slash offer of context, I guess, so as you might be aware, the Planning Commission is starting to look at the zoning for future cannabis sales, and also looking at some of like the more practical aspects of our city code. So this fall, you're going to be seeing a recommendation coming from the Planning Commission to allow sales of both THC products and tobacco products in V-two zones. So what we're noticing after reviewing our zoning map and looking at our licensing process for tobacco is that there are many businesses that are already, they, they fit within V-two zoning but are also able to sell tobacco, so we would like to just expand that so that we don't consistently have CUP applications coming in for both tobacco or, or THC sales as we start to expand that code. Before that, you will continue to see CUPs, CUPs coming in for THC, and there is one coming on Tuesday, so that's just some of the context for why that will be before you on Tuesday, and what you can expect in the future.
Thanks, Clara. Andrew, Lynn, anything else?
Nope.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.